Hello and welcome to this forum for candidates running for Lakewood City Council Position Four. This is the only Lakewood race to be on the primary ballot this year. Because only races with three or more candidates appear on the primary election ballot. The top two vote getters will advance to the general election, which is on November seventh. The primary election date is August first, it's the earliest it can be. You should have received both your voter's pamphlet and your ballot by now. If you have not, contact Pierce County Elections. If you're not yet a registered voter, you may register and vote up to eight P M. On election day at the elections office or at libraries. We're here to question the candidates on local issues. The League of Women Voters does not, and never has, and never will, support individual candidates. We try to get all candidates to talk about issues so that you can make up your mind. We also urge you to read their websites and check Vote 411 for further candidate information. I am Liz Kernitz Thurlow of the League of Women Voters, and I am moderating the forum. The League of Women Voters wishes to acknowledge that we live on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tohoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous culture, histories, identities, and current realities. Welcome to our candidates for Lakewood City Council Position Four. They are Ryan Pearson, Charles Ames, and Paul Wagaman. Thank you all for being here with us. This forum is being recorded and will be available for viewing at L W V T P C dot org. Our timekeeper is Terry Baker. She will use cards to let the candidates know how much time is remaining. One minute, thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and when it's time to stop. If you see the stop card, you may finish a very short sentence. All candidates get the same questions and the same amount of time to answer them, and the order of answering will rotate with each question. The opening order will be reversed for closing statements. You may have up to two minutes for your opening statement, whatever I give you for each question, and one minute for closing. Viewers in real time, if you have a question, you may text it to two five three nine oh six four seven three four. Is that looking backwards?
Hold it down just a little bit. Right there, stop.
We will use what we can. It is time for opening statements. Ryan Pearson, you get the first one, and you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm Ryan Pearson. I'm a father, husband, and Lakewood resident for the past decade. I've got a son Grayson, four, and daughter Ada, two. We love Lakewood and are thankful to be raising our kids here, such a wonderful community. My wife is a lifelong Lakewood resident. Being a public servant is a core value in our family. I feel it's my civic duty to give back to the community and help continue to make Lakewood a great place to live and work. That's really why I chose to run. I'm a professional engineer. I work for Pierce County. I work in residential, commercial, industrial development as an engineer. I do a lot of work out in Fredericksen area. There's, I've been a member of the Lakewood Planning Commission for the past five or six years. And I'm currently Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Yeah, that's my synopsis there. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum. I attended four years ago. I understand and acknowledge the part that the League of Women Voters has to play in the tremendous pressure that is being put on them throughout the years, kind of cutting into their mission, and I think that's unjust and unfair. Let's move on. Yes, I'm Charles Ames. I have lived in Pierce County most of my life, almost all of that in Lakewood. Gosh, my community involvement. Gosh, let's go back to Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. Twenty years in military, Marine Corps, and National Guard where I deployed to Operation Iraqi Freedom was the commander's security and driver. And since coming back to Washington State, gosh, then I became Commandant to the Marine Corps League, the local one, for a couple of terms. I was also Public Safety Advisory Committee Chairman for a couple of terms. I am most recently the President of the Springbrook Neighborhood Association. Long may that flag wave. I'm a lifetime member of the V F W and the Public Affairs Officer. Gosh, let's see. And then you get into the city aside from the Public Safety Advisor Committee, also the Sign Code. I was one of the founding members of the Lakewood Arts Task Force. I'm a big supporter of the Lakewood players, both as an usher and an actor. And gosh, I could just go on, and therefore a second you're afraid that I'm going to. So I will leave a little bit of time for the rest of the proceedings. Paul?
Thank you, Paul Wagaman.
Hey, good evening, everyone. And again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this opportunity together because, you know, how do citizens that want to vote their ballot, how do they know? And this is an opportunity for them to see us and hear us and tell a story. I thank you for appointing people to go to people's website. Unfortunately, mine has been hacked, so I would appreciate until I get it corrected. Right now, it's a pornography site and just the worst thing that could happen during elections. So please forgive me. I don't know what happened, but I'm trying to get to the bottom with a domain company, and we'll try and get that squared away. But what have I done? I spent twenty-three years in the Marine Corps, the Marine Corps sent me to the University of Washington, and that's what brought me to this area. I met my wife who lived on American Lake. We were married in nineteen seventy-three, so we're coming up on our fiftieth wedding anniversary this year in August. And we raised two sons, my oldest son's an Air Force pilot, now a Colonel in the Air Force, and he has three daughters. And so those three little granddaughters are down in Las Vegas now. My youngest son works as a rights programs or relational database, so he's a software engineer, I guess is what you'd call him. He has four sons, and so we have seven grandchildren, and that's what that does. What have they done in the community? We retired here in nineteen ninety-one, and I ran a business in Olympia. We had a computer business down there. We shut that down towards the nineties, and then I worked in multiple businesses throughout here in Tacoma. We did drug testing for Department of Corrections. Then we then I worked for an aviation training company out of Altus, Oklahoma. And so we had just many wonderful opportunities to do things. Working with the city of Lakewood, I was appointed to the Transportation Committee, which now has been merged into the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
So. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. As Ryan Pearson gave the first opening statement, Charles Ames will answer the first question first. Why you? What in your background that you didn't already tell us, or your work with Lakewood issues makes you the right candidate for this seat? And you can have up to ninety seconds.
From my point of view, I'm already doing that, which a council member does. Not only am I representing one of six districts that Lakewood maintains, but I've also been in a number of the citizen advisory committees. I think what it really gets down to is representing a portion of Lakewood that has not heretofore been represented, at least a third, maybe even half. I've worked a great deal with council members. I've worked a great deal with city employees. I forgot to mention that I was also President of Harrison Prep's Parent-Each Organization, which enabled me to make working relationships with a number of the parents there. It's just that I like to say that I have one foot in the future, and so I was handed out masks at the Public Safety Advisory Committee meetings as Chair, fully three years before COVID came down. When I asked about the city's water safety, I was told, don't worry about it. And then the next year, forever chemicals were found in the water. I asked about whether Amtrak had done slow tests before their crash, and they had not. I could give you a couple other examples like that. It's not so much do I have this vision like I do for small business of just trying to keep the council from getting in trouble as it has done in the past.
Thank you. Paul Wagaman.
Why me? Well, I bring experience to the table. I've served on the local school board for fourteen years now. So I care about our children. I care about our community. I've served on the Planning Commission, which is trying to look at ways to take care of things. You know, there's a lot of things that are going on great in our city, and how do we continue that going as we go forward? And so I would like to be part of that and continue those things, you know, the good things that we're doing. I don't have anything that what I would consider awful at this point of view. I think we've managed our budget reasonably well here in the city. And we're, and we need to continue to do that. But the big thing right now that concerns me, and I'm working up in Tacoma as a building engineer, and the homeless situation is really a problem, and as they correct that in the Tacoma area, then we have a real risk of that moving south into Lakewood. And so how can we make our community a community of hope so that all individuals, including those people that fall in the category that we label homeless, how do we help take care of them and yet hold people accountable so that they don't destroy our businesses? That becomes a real problem with people camping out of people's front doors. So those are things we need to do accountability and help. Thank you.
Ryan Pearson.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I kind of led into it in my first answer, but I'm a professional engineer. I work in development, urban development, economic development, trying to bring jobs, you know, homes to cities and counties in the area. So that's what I do for work. I'm also a member of the Lakewood Planning Commission, so I'm really familiar with the code, the the city codes ordinances that, you know, we've recommended, you know, to the city council. So there's, wouldn't be nearly, you know, maybe the the learning curve that some other folks may have. And then I, you know, there's a generational difference between me and most of the folk on the on the city council right now. So I, you know, I feel like I would bring a different, maybe point of view, perspective on things, just being a bit younger. I'm, you know, thoughtful, level-headed, and you know, here to try to make an impact on the city in the best way I can and help, you know, do things that are good for everyone. So that's my goal.
Thank you. Paul Wagaman is first on this one. As you said, there are increasing problems with homelessness, people living on the streets, and their cars, in tents, everywhere. And it's not just in Tacoma. What are your hopes and plans for some new possible solutions to getting people housed? What should we be doing?
Okay, you know, that's always a question, how do we get affordable housing for everyone? But I think the first part, we have to make sure we have some good definitions. When we say homeless, what do we really mean? Is it just people that don't have a roof over their head? But I think there's multiple categories that fit within that category. First off, we have mental health issues, so we really need to make sure that we're working with our county and our state and our federal government to work with the mental health issues. The second is we have people that are lawbreakers in the job that I have in Tacoma right now. They cut my fence twice last week. That cost me a thousand dollars a pop to get those the fence fixed. And so we need to hold people accountable that are being destructive with the graffiti, cutting fences, defecating in people's property. I think those are problems, so we need an accountability. And then then we have some people that have true needs, and I think we need to work with our nonprofit organizations like the Rescue Mission, Habitat for Humanity, to find places for people to live so that they're not living in the rain. You know, being a Marine, I spent a lot of time living in the rain. And it's not a whole lot of fun, so we need to have places for people to live. And the Planning Commission, I know we're working on lots of things to make sure we have zoning to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan Pearson.
Yep, thank you. So yeah, I mean homelessness is one of the most challenging issues that we're facing right now. If anyone had the answer, they'd be rich, because every city in the U S would be, you know, calling them. But I do think that it starts with collaboration, collaboration with the city, county, state, you know, local local agencies. You know, it's, there's, there's different levels to it. I think that the more we can categorize, you know, and kind of better fit the needs of each of the individuals, the better it is. There's folks that, you know, are on tough times and want to work and want to, you know, do the right thing. And, you know, starting out by helping those folks would be, I think, you know, a huge benefit, so you don't have those things recurring again. You know, I also think that, you know, being able to control or at least, you know, somewhat control where the homeless camps are happening. It helps, you know, reduce the spread of it over the city, but it also helps keep people close to the services that they need if you have those services in those areas. So I think that, you know, being able to somewhat contain it and have services available for folks in the area is really important. I also think, you know, you know, public drug use, public camping, those things aren't, you know, shouldn't be allowed in the city and should actively be discouraged, but we do need to help the folks, you know.
Charles Ames.
Very encouraging to hear the other gentleman come up with these ideas. For instance, as of our last meeting, I mentioned my plan, which I'm hesitant to divulge too much because I often find that when I give a plan, the city very quickly adopts and it becomes their plan. I said that I was hoping to keep the city out of trouble, and I think this would be an example where I might be able to help with that because recently the city has come up with the solution of arresting homeless people, like all of a sudden they're going to be rehabilitated once they get out of jail. Now, we've got to, I was on the point in time count just not even a year ago, and I've always wondered, here you go, here's some free advice. Why we can't have those counters be followed by program specialists? People who are well-versed in helping people get homes, people who are well-versed in, say, veterans veterans issues like I am. Why can't we follow them with people who are medically trained? Because we're spending a lot on jailing and medically treating homeless people, and I think that's unfortunate. There is something we've got to do on this end because the longer we go on, the more and more funding is getting caught, is getting cut, like in housing permits and building permits. That's what's killing us.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan Pearson will be first. Lakewood is an increasingly diverse community with residents from many backgrounds, but council members are not as diverse. Do you think that Lakewood should study moving to electing council members by district rather than being elected at large? Why or why not do that? How could it work? And see if we can do it in sixty seconds. Ryan Pearson.
Um, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. You know, the districts, you do get representation, you're guaranteed to get representation from that district. Whether or not it's a competitive, you know, campaign is another thing because it's hard to get people to run for, you know, elected positions. And so I think having the at-large system, you know, you're guaranteed to get more, maybe more candidates, whether or not they're all better or less qualified, but at least you're guaranteed to get more candidates because you have a larger pool to choose from. So there's benefits of both. You know, you do get those folks from right from the district in those neighborhoods. But they may not be maybe the best choice, but they're the only choice. And so, you know, you could get that situation. So thank you.
Thank you, Charles Ames.
Wow, there's a lot there that I really have a problem with. First of all, I have to kind of push back a little bit on the council not being diversity represented. The Deputy Mayor, Mary Moss, certainly falls into the category of diverse, as does Patty Bell. Let's see, and if one of the council members, I guess I can name him, if I were to mention, Tristan Ferracella, he would say that that yes, that there is a sufficient amount of diversity, a little more sure wouldn't hurt districts. Yes, this is my wheelhouse is because no one from a third of the city has ever been represented. That is way overdue, and I guarantee you, regardless of the council, it's never going to happen, unfortunately.
Thank you, Paul Wagaman.
Yes, I certainly, we are a diverse community. There's no question. Sitting on the school board, you know, you look at all the different languages that are spoken in our school district. It's amazing. So that's the city of Lakewood. And so how do they get represented? On the school board, we do by districts, but we're voted in at large, and I think that's a problem. However, I've made motions to get that changed, and they've been all voted down. So I don't know if it's a popular thing with our community, if people even understand the issue that's here. I think we get better representation if we would go by district, so I would certainly support that going forward. That would be my perspective on that. But Mr. Pearson pointed out the problem with that. Sometimes you can't find people from a certain district that are willing to run. And certainly, being a candidate is not the easiest thing in the world. It's painful, and you have to work. And so trying to find those people that so we can hear their voices. I know that I'll work very, thank you.
Thank you. You could have finished the sentence. Okay. Charles Ames is first on this one. And you get up to ninety seconds, but you're going to need a lot more. What is Lakewood's biggest problem issue? Have you proposed to try to solve it? Go.
I'm fond of saying that Lakewood lacks its own identity. When people think of Lakewood, they think, oh, that's that place where those four cops were killed like a dozen years ago. Or they think that, oh, that's the place that's just outside Joint Base Lewis McCord. Lakewood itself does not have an immediate identity. I've said in the past that, you know, we turned down an opportunity to have a zoo, to have an, to have an amusement park. And I like to joke that we don't even have a giant ball of twine for current out loud. We need something where the world around, if you say Lakewood, people go, oh, yes, that the place that has art. That is the place that has a bike race. That is the place where people can go for a vacation. We have none of those. We're a brutalist architecture society. We need to work on our middle-sized businesses. We need to raise up. We need to expand upon our natural resources. I think that we're just not getting the most use we could out of Lakewood, which, you know, I think that everyone would agree that that it's long overdue.
Thank you. Paul Wagaman.
I do think Lakewood has an identity. You know, when I came here thirty years ago, or more than that, nineteen seventy to University of Washington, I used to come down here to Tacoma because that's where my wife's family is from. And this is beautiful. We have trees. We have things that people want to come to. We have our lakes. So we do have some things there. So I would, I would say that the things that we need to improve on, and I think there's a whole lot of work going on in this area, are parks. And one of the key words that gets thrown around is livable community. What is that? And, you know, now you can see around the Gravity Lake, we've got some sidewalks going in. There's lots of sidewalks going in and other places as they put the roundabouts in. So we have places for people to walk. We have the bike lanes. I wish that there was more access to the lakes for people, but I know that that's a problem for some because the weekends are crazy when people get all their boats out there. But it certainly makes it livable. So continue to work on parks and those kinds of things, I think is very, very important. I know on the Planning Commission, we talked a little bit about how much parking do we need? If you go to the mall area, we have lots of parking spaces, but most of those parking spaces are never used during the year. You know, could we have picnic areas in that area? You know, I don't know what those all are, but I think we need to work together to have things that are enjoyable for people to sit around and, you know, meet their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan Pearson.
All right, yeah. So I think that Lakewood isn't unique in the sense that one of the biggest issues like anywhere else in the in the South Sound area or Puget Sound area is affordable housing. I think that we're also struggling with the same issue. You know, the Growth Management Act, it comes out and every, so we, so often is updated and says that we need to account for X amount of, you know, new housing. I think that one of the biggest things that we can do is help create more housing and more affordable housing. So, you know, it's not just affordable housing, but it's more housing in general. The more housing we have, you know, helps put more on the market, and so people aren't, you know, you know, holding people hostage for, you know, the one or two houses that they're looking for in their budget and driving prices up. So the more housing that we have, the better. You know, that's, that's, I think, one of the, one of the big issues that we have, you know, that trickles down to being able to have some low-income housing and helping, you know, the homeless problem. So that's a trickle-down issue that I think you know, will really help out if we're just promoting housing. But housing, you know, in the right way, not just putting up fourplexes on residential lots like what the state wants us to do. So thank you.
Thank you. To move to the more positive, what is Lakewood's greatest strength? And is anything needed to keep it the greatest strength? Sixty seconds. Paul Wagaman.
Well, I think the first place I would start is, is that they've, from my perspective, have managed the budget pretty well. You know, and I don't want to throw University Place under the bus, but they jumped ahead and they got themselves a real financial bind. And so one of the things that I think Lakewood has done is manage that budget and has done slow progress. I think some of us, there are some in our community that would like to see it all done at once. But if you once get behind, that's a problem. I know when I was on the Transportation Committee, you know, taking care of all our roads, chip seal, nobody likes chip seal, but, you know, that keeping, taking care of those roads so they don't get potholes is very, very important. So those are some areas that I feel that we should work on and continue to work on. But, you know, maintaining what we have, maintaining our budget, that works, that helps all of us as citizens in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Pearson.
Can you review the question, please?
Sure. What is Lakewood's greatest strength? Is anything needed to keep it the greatest strength?
Um, one of the greatest strengths of Lakewood is the location that we happen to stumble into. So we're right off the I five corridor, right next to J B L M. We have Great Lakes, you know, in the community, and, you know, it's a really just naturally beautiful place to live. So that's a huge strength. With the location being next to the I five corridor, opens up some opportunities for growth, you know, with commercial industrial development. You know, do allowing some industrial development like what's been done in the past, you know, really helps Um, you know, uh, do, allowing some industrial development like what's been done in the past, uh, you know, really helps, um. Reduce some of the tax burden on, on folks that, um, you know, want to keep seeing these lovely improvements that we're doing around the city. These, you know, sidewalk improvements and stuff. So, um, you know, being able to promote that, uh, in, in some areas, um. You know, that, that's a, that's really critical.
Thank you, Charles Ames.
Washington state is recognized as being liberal. So, this is excessively so in some people's eyes. However, we are just outside. Uh, the Northwest's largest military base, which tends to even it out a little bit. Um, therefore, we tend to be a fairly down the middle, uh, community. And, uh, my apologies, anybody that I may have, uh, uh, erringly called conservative in the past. Apparently the council is fairly even there. Therefore, I think that probably, uh. Expanding on the resources we talked about, the lakes, by God, it would be great if, uh, the public could have more access to them. Unfortunately, they're surrounded by million dollar homes. Greenery, yes, let us maintain this greener. And we mentioned a little bit about the tax rate and I agree. Gosh, if we could get it under ten percent, so you're not tied in ten percent to your church. And ten percent to your city. This is one of the rare occasions that I maybe not am all progressive. I'd like to see that worked on.
Thank you. Reminder, if you have a question, you can text it to two five three. Nine O six, four seven, three four. Okay, the next question goes to Ryan Pearson first. The city has needed and wanted a new library and there's talk of putting it in a new town center. The library is part of Pierce County Library System, so the city can't make all the decisions. But right now the plan is apparently a temporary library on the old site. What are your thoughts on this? What do you think they should be doing or planning? Will you get involved and how? And do that in a minute, please.
Sure. Yeah, the, uh, a library, you know, is obviously really important for. Um, everyone, uh, professionals, young kids, you know, everyone in the schools, um, you know, having access to. Books, computers, all of those things. So, um, you know, the planning that goes in. That goes into, you know, where and what should be in the library is important and there are, um, you know. Uh, library, um, I can't remember what the committee is, but there's a, there's a committee. Um, that, that is handling some of that. Um, there's collaboration with the city and, and those committees. Um, but it, it's important and we need to look at where, uh, the, the most folks need access to those, these public services. Um, and try to help them out as best we can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charles Ames.
Uh, let me let Ryan off the hook because I applied to that committee and I can't recall the exact name of it either. I just call it the Lakewood Library Steering Committee and, uh, it, it would have been nice if we had space. To relocate it somewhere, but it looks like honestly, the cheapest way. To rebuild the Lakewood Library is to rebuild the Lakewood Library, flatten it to the ground and rebuild. Cause otherwise we're spending way more on, uh, just improving it. I've relied a great deal upon the library for our resources and services. And, uh, I think that we deserve nothing less than a world-class library as well. And it is agonizingly slow, that it feels like it's taking them forever to put that together. However, let us hope that the decisions they make indicate that we're going to have a library for the ages, just like the one we had before.
Thank you, Paul Wagaman.
I, I, I agree with the other two gentlemen. Libraries are very important, but I'll, I'll just throw an outside the box thought here. Um, we have multiple schools in, in, um, Lakewood, uh, that are part of the Clover Park District. And every one of them has a library. Um, those are all paid for by our local citizens, taxpayers. So in a, in a sense, they're community property. I, I would like to see us figure out some kind of shared arrangement. Where we could use some of those facilities instead of spending more to build a whole new facility. Yes, and a nice new facility would be nice, but. How, how much do we spend? And then schools, there are parts of the year they're not available. So if we could figure out a way to make those public accesses, they could be community centers, uh, that, those school buildings. And, and the library would be one of those places where people can meet and, uh, build their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Charles Ames is first for the next one. The Tillicum Woodbrook Community is part of Lakewood, but isolated from the rest of the city. And apparently the I five enhancements are separating it even further. Apparently as well, a large portion of the community will not be able to afford connecting to the sanitary sewers which are arriving soon. How are you prepared to help with either or both of these problems?
All right, well, the, uh, sewer, I don't have any immediate, uh, solutions to, but I was at the Lakewood. I'm sorry, at the, uh, Tillicum Woodbrook Neighborhood Association meeting just a week ago. And I know that David Anderson, uh, we, him and I might have, uh, ideological opposite views. He is a firebrand. He is holding Tillicum together. He is doing everything he can to make sure that they are represented. And therefore, um, I, I think that if there is any movement, uh, there, it is because of, uh, David Anderson. Um, yes, like I said, I attended there about a week ago. Um, and I feel for those people because like I said, they are part of that triangle of Lakewood that's not getting adequately represented. And then I got a, uh, email from a lady, uh, just a couple of days ago. It says, hey, now, uh. Tesla and Amazon and other industries are taking up, uh, some of our warehouse room and crowding people out. The gentrification is something that we've got to, uh, address and Ryan is right. There needs to be better housing opportunities there to benefit. People like Tillicum, people like Woodbrook, people like Springbrook, and you know what? People like me.
Thank you, Ryan Pearson.
Yeah, um, I'm not acutely aware what's going on with the sewers in Tillicum. But, um, generally speaking, when, you know, sewers are brought into an area. Um, you have sewer, you know, some fees that are, uh, that it, it costs money to bring sewers there. And so you have these basin charges, um, when you want to hook up, when people hook up. So, um, if someone, you know, if there's a sewer line out in the road, yes, it's going to cost someone a, a fair chunk of change to, uh, connect. But what that also, um, brings is, you know, a, a lot of opportunity for. A, a, an area that's been, you know, maybe underdeveloped to get some redevelopment, um, you know, have, have some developers. Um, you know, extend this, the sewer even further and maybe get some higher density housing i- in there, um. You know, uh, sidewalks, road improvements, um, really clean the area, uh, you know, sewer is a. Is an amazing thing if it's provided to an area like that, that's on septic and, you know, doesn't have, um, or septic or old, old sewers, um. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's a really critical piece of infrastructure and, you know, being allowed, being able to tie into it. And do thoughtful development, um, would really go a long ways in that area, I believe.
Thank you, Paul Wagaman. I apologize. I just somehow looked at the wrong line on my chart. And you were supposed to be the previous one and I made the order wrong and I'm very, very sorry, but would you please answer it now?
Yes, uh, sewers are, are very important to our community. It certainly protects our lakes. When, you know, like in nineteen seventy, when I came up here, we had issues at, uh, Lake Washington up in Seattle area. And, and so anything that can protect our natural resources is very important. So sewer is a big piece of that. Unfortunately, they're expensive and I think Mr. Pearson already touched on that. They're pretty spendy. And so, and, and certainly, uh, in, uh, Tillicum, we have a lot of people that are lower income. And so it, it makes, that's a big stretch for them to have to come up with the money to make that happen. So what I would suggest that, you know, our, our city team. Uh, and again, we work with Pierce County, cause they're the, the people that handle this, the whole sewer thing. So it, we work with them in partnership. So. We should be working to find grants and other ways to fund those things. Cause certainly when we have sewers, then it makes it easier for businesses to get started and those kinds of things. And it makes it, you know. More help and, and then if we need to get affordable housing, certainly, uh, vertical housing at some point in time. That really is helpful because you're not going to run that on a, a septic system. So that would be another way to get, uh, some lower cost housing. And so, uh, I, I, I don't know what else to, to tell you. There's. It, it, to me, it's really a money issue and a, and a focus issue. So we need to be focused on that and try to figure out ways to save money and then put it to those kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away, cause you're answering the next question first. Climate change is with us. What ideas do you have to help mitigate it in Lakewood? Increased clean public transit, increased tree canopy, more mixed neighborhoods so people can walk to work, more parks. What are your plans and ideas? And you get up to ninety seconds to solve this for us.
Yes, um, certainly, I, I like the word climate change. Um, you know, cause we've gone everywhere from global cooling to global warming, uh, the climate changes. And, you know, if you've worked on the ground around here, you know that we have glacial till. So there used to be glaciers over this very land that we're sitting on today. And so, what, what do we do about that? So we need to be good stewards of our resources. So, uh, you know, the one renewable resources have trees. So one of the things when we, the planning commission worked and made some recommendations. Uh, they, we, they talked about having an urban forest. And so that's one thing we can do. They, the, the planning commission recommended, uh, in- increasing canopy cover. But the city council went over and above that. I, I don't know if that's necessarily was the best answer for our community, but. That was a decision that was made. So, um, you know, how do we do that? And, and the other thing is, is that we've discovered that. Um, lower income areas and rental housing are the ones that don't have the, the canopy cover. And so we, we need to figure out how to do that. Uh, you know, who, who doesn't love trees? You know, I love trees, but you know, trees, they can break your foundation, uh, trees clog your, your gutters. Trees fall through your roof and those kind of things. So those are some issues that we need to consider. So I think having, uh, an arborist that's part of our community that works with citizens and homeowners and landlords. To have as much canopy cover as we can makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan Pearson.
So, um, on the planning commission, we had, uh, the city did a presentation and, um, had one of their consultants. I think it was like Planet Geo, but they had done, um, a, a pretty big evaluation of, um, the overall tree canopy. Um, you know, s- some, some different renewable resources or, uh, green energy that, that, you know. It is, is a potential. So I think having a comprehensive study done on, on what we have and what we, you know. Maybe some, some areas where we could easily improve. Um, I, I think that you don't just say, yo, we need to do this, you know, without, you know, being thoughtful, um, first and seeing, you know. What kind of low hanging fruit we can knock off first. So, um, I'm, you know, I'm. Uh, it's a challenging subject because, you know, a lot of the times when you have, you know, these, these. Climate change goals and renewable energy and, you know, this and that, um. It kind of goes against affordable housing. So those two things tend to butt heads. Um, but, you know, being able to, uh, identify some, some areas that we could make some big improvements in. Um, and, and, and knock out some low hanging fruit, I think would go a long way. So that would be my, uh, suggestion is to get a, a comprehensive plan. You know, comprehensive study done on what we have and, and go and be able to make some decisions and go from there.
Thank you, Charles Ames.
This morning, I heard on the news that Speaker of the House Kevin McCarthy, uh, finally. In a way acknowledged climate change and his plan, I'm totally serious about this, was to plant one trillion trees. Now, there is one trillion square feet, uh, on the United States. I'm not just talking continental. I'm talking the entire United States. That means there would be a tree every hundred feet. And if the canopy exceeds a hundred feet, you're never going to see the sky. We've got to have practical solutions. And some of us have been looking at this for a long time. Uh, yes, we mentioned that the, uh, city has recently. Uh, come up with a tree committee. It sounds like a tree hugger sort of a solution. But for every tree that is taken to have got to replace it, and I've had some trees out here trimmed. Where that, uh, was the place as well. I can still walk to a tree that I planted on Camp Murray. Twenty years ago and I can't get my arms around it. We need to do that. We need to inspire everyone to take action like that. Sure as hell, we better get some E V incentives. Uh, maybe they're not going to be able to help people buy them. But let's get a heck of a lot more charging port. Let's get a heck of a lot more solar. Let, let's find someplace that we can put up very high, uh, wind generators. Let's. There is so much we could do. We can't drag our feet on this.
Thank you. This will be the last question. Ryan Pearson will answer it first. Other environmental issues. How are the parks? Do they need help? Work, saving, new facilities? And while you're at it, cause I'm giving you ninety seconds, let's talk about public transit also. Is it acceptable? Does it need improvement? And if so, what? Go.
Thank you. Um, we have, uh, you know, a really robust public transit system here. Um, you know, uh, the Lakewood Town Center is an amazing hub for that. We've got, um, the, the train station in there. Um, so, you know, Lakewood really is set up well for public transit. You know, the, on, on the planning commission, um, you know, there's, there's some thoughts about expanding, um, development. Uh, directly around some of those areas to encourage a bit more, uh, high density. You know, where folks may not need to have a car and still could have access to public transportation to, you know, go to work in Tacoma or Seattle or wherever. Or, you know, just do whatever they wanted to do, but be close to public transit. Um, you know, the, the condition of, of the public transportation, um, you know, I've taken many trips up to the airport. Uh, in the city buses and, um, so I, I think that they're acceptable. I'm not expecting a whole lot. So as long as they're running on time and, you know, reasonably clean, um, you know. Whether or not we can, you know, uh, improve if they're, you know, more environmentally friendly or not. Um, there's, uh, some different technologies out there with that. Um, but, you know, large and far, I think that, uh. We have a pretty robust, uh, public transportation system and are, are very lucky that we have, uh, a, a stop in. For the, the train. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charles Ames.
Yes, public transit I see is on the city's budget every year in their long-term planning. And here on the ground level, I can tell you Pierce Transit is always making changes. Now that should be a good thing. But unfortunately, it tends to leave a lot of the citizens here in this area high and dry. Maybe the bus service is just evaporated or just so rare that it's tough for them. Because there is a, a number of retirees in this, uh, area as well. What I love to see a, uh, um. Uh, mass transit, a rapid transit service, Lakewood, I'm sorry, Tacoma finally got done with their Tacoma link. Certainly we could benefit from something like that. Our ferry system, it seems like it's always having some kind of interruption. And so maybe a little bit more funding for that. Um, and gosh, I'd hate to impose upon the bases. But yes, I've heard citizens say before, there is a courier running right past us every day. Why can't we benefit from that? Uh, and I hate to get into the airport, uh, morass. But there is something we could use a little bit closer than C-TAC, maybe not quite as big, but we've got the room for it. And I think that, uh, we can't just kick that can down the road. We've got to look at options that are maybe a little bit closer and a little bit smaller and ask McCord to share some of their toys.
Thank you, Paul Wagaman.
Uh, just so I, it, it's, is this a public transportation question? Could you just repeat the question again, please?
I brought up, um, environmental issues like parks or public transit and they chose to talk about public transit.
Okay.
What are the other environmental issues and what should we do about them?
Okay, um, cer- certainly transportation i- is, is a big issue, you know. People like, some people use buses and, and, and I'll tell you, I've used buses. I have an Orca card. And, uh, it's certainly convenient to get to Seattle. It's convenient to get to the airport, um, and, and those kind of things. But I don't think it is for everyone. On the planning commission, we looked at, um, having affordable housing close to, uh, people. Public transportation is really one of the goals that we as a city should continue to work for and, and make happen. Um, James Guerrero, who used to be on the planning commission with us, and you know, did a really interesting re- report. And it just said, what your income has to be to be able to afford, uh, a, a private vehicle like a car. And if we can have housing close to public transportation, then they won't have to try and spend money on cars. That means we can have reduced parking, which um, uh, helps our environment. If we can get people out of cars, um, I I'm not saying everybody should be out of cars, but people, if their income isn't such, then how do they make that happen? So we we need to do some things there. And certainly, you know, I'll talk a little bit about parks. Parks make our community a livable space and uh, people love to take their children there. Uh, it gives people a a break. And then, and then I think the other thing that we need to do is if we could have more jobs in our community. You know warehouses, we've got a lot of warehouses in our community. That brings good revenue for the city. Unfortunately, it doesn't necessarily give us as many jobs. So we need to have jobs that are local. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. And in reverse order, Paul Wagaman will make the first closing statement. You each have up to one minute.
It's two minutes is what you said?
One.
One minute, one minute to close. Okay, well, a- again, thank you, everyone. And uh, thank you, Ryan and Charles for your comments today. You know, it is a great discussion to hear what people are thinking. And I and I think that's really important for our citizens. Because this is all about we, the people. How do we, the people, um, see change in our community? Well, it's basically by elected people. When I get emails from the school board, when they complain about something, I said, just remember, it's who you vote for that makes a difference. So uh, tha- that's very important. So the League of Women Voters are doing a good job to try and get those ideas out to the voters, the we, the people. And you you gotta, gotta look at those things. I think the other thing that's very good in the voter's pamphlet, they have our phone numbers. So if you have a personal question you need to ask, you can go to League of Women Voters and ask their questions there. But you can also call us individually and ask us. My, I'm personally more than happy to answer those questions, which I've done multiple times already in this last week. So uh, again, thank you so much for making this available and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charles Ames.
I think that any one of us would be a good council member. I'd like to think that I'd be a great council member because I have done this for uh, so long, uh, doing it all but getting the paycheck. Um, I have met with a bunch of folks. I have responded to a number of uh, emails and uh, assured people that I would like to be their council member on call, that I would be available to them and that I could give some hope to this community that I reside in, who for so long have been not underrepresented, just completely unrepresented. I'd like to think that uh, twenty-five years is not a very long period for a city. We've got a number of benefits available to us. And I've hoped that we're not going to load it down with a a great deal of regulation. But yes, we're on a right track and I would love to be a part of uh, continuing the legacy of Lakewood where we stop lagging and start leading.
Thank you. Ryan Pearson.
Thanks, um. Yeah, y- you know, I I appreciate you guys, um, having us on here. It's great to be able to, um, you know, have an opportunity for folks to uh, tune in and and see what what our thoughts are. I get a lot of questions about, you know, am I a Democrat or a Republican? And so I, you know, I'm running as an independent and I, you know, am and really, this is a a nonpartisan position. And so I'm just here trying to make uh, the biggest impact I can and uh, continue to grow the the place that me and my family, um, and many others uh, call home, um. You know, I I'm I'm thoughtful, I'm um, smart, I'm a professional in the community. Uh, I I think that it it would be valuable to have a a civil engineer on the city council, um. You know, there's just a little, little um, different background. Um, I I would really appreciate uh, your vote. So I I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Thank you all for being with us and answering our questions. Thank you, or to our timekeeper, our call-in question taker, our forum organizers and our web support. Thanks also to our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, A A U W Pualo, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, N A A C P of Tacoma, Sumner Waller Community Association and the Tacoma Urban League. And thank you to our listeners for becoming interested and educated voters. We encourage you to read your voter's pamphlet, check out Vote Four One One, a website where all candidates for all elections are asked to answer questions and the candidates' websites, except when there's a problem as we were told about. Now, don't forget to vote. Your ballot must be in a drop box or postmarked by eight P M. on August first. Thank you all very much.